Duncan?
Here.
Lindell?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Yep.
All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second City Council meeting here in October. It's time, my Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
I will second.
Motion by Ken, second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Harry. That moves us on to item five tonight, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments must be pertinent to city business and adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Is there anybody wishing to address the council under public input? Cal?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Kyle Paulson and I am representing the Cannon Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. I do have a couple of events coming up between now and Christmas. October 31st is our trick or treat trot and that is from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Mill Street, Fourth Street, and Main Street downtown. Word has it that there can be over 500 youth on the streets that evening. We do have the Cannon Falls Police that will be manning the intersections, but we will not be closing any streets for that evening. And so, I ask everyone to bring their children. They do need to be accompanied by adults, but let's have a lot of fun that night. Then the other event, and you may think this is a little far out, but it is Deck the Falls. It is on Saturday, November 24th. There is the parade and we are looking for more units. Doesn't have to be floats. It can be tractors. It can be fire trucks. It can be scoop shovel precision teams. So whoever can come up with interesting ideas, you are more than welcome to contact the Chamber so we can make a bigger and better parade. We are also wanting to promote all of the events that are happening on that Saturday or that weekend. So if you would just contact the Chamber again to let us know about your event, we can add it to the schedule so we have a community-wide event going on. I do want to thank Mike, Althoff, and Afton Auto. I met with them today. They will be partnering with the Chamber to help put the floats together, help get the Christmas decorations and the garland up, decorating the Christmas tree. And so, we are on the way to planning Deck the Falls. Any questions, you can call me. Our number at the office is (507) 263-2289. Any questions?
Thanks, Cal.
Anyone else under public input this evening? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, we'll read the consent agenda. Item A is suggesting correct claims for the accounting period ending October 11, 2018. Item B are the meeting minutes for the October 2, 2018 City Council meeting. Item C, disposal of forfeited vehicles. Item D, Resolution 2386, accepting a donation of $500 from Barb Camholz to the library. Item E, Resolution 2387, accepting donation of $250 from Joan Melhouse to the library. Item F, Resolution 2388, accepting a donation of $50 from Goodhue County Chapter Minnesota State Horticulture Society to the library. Item G, approve application for payment number four for the 2018 street improvement project. Item H, set budget work section... work session. Item I, Resolution 2389, declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment. Item J, Resolution 2390 for hearing on proposed assessment. Item K, greater trade-in and purchased, used greater. And item L, hiring full-time paramedic. Are there any items anybody wishes to pull down? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
All moved.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion by Bill, second by Ken. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Harry. That moves us on to council business this evening. And we have the 2019 medical insurance. Lanell?
Thank you, Mayor. Our medical insurance has been a topic of discussion recently, especially with our proposed budget. And this evening, we have Bill Singer from the AT Group here to discuss some of the options that we have to us regarding our insurance renewal. Just as a reminder, the city does have a December 1 renewal date, so we are closing in rapidly upon that. So we would like to get some direction from the City Council tonight so that we can move forward. And if we're going to make changes, we need to move on that quickly so we can have that done by November 1 in order to get those changes in place with a new carrier. And with that, Bill Singer has some information that he'll review with you and then we'll get some direction from the council after that.
So, good afternoon. My name is Bill Singer. I work with a company called AT Group and we work as the insurance agency for the City of Cannon Falls benefits, not just the health insurance, but the remaining benefits as well. So I'm just here to talk about the health insurance, I should say, health insurance plan, but it's really the health insurance increase because if there wasn't an increase, I wouldn't probably be here. So, part of my job each year when we get our renewals is to go ahead and scan the market to see what other options there are for the city and if any of them offer us an advantage. To give you a quick summary of the state of insurance in Minnesota, four groups our size, small groups. There are only four fully insured small group carriers in the state. Blue Cross, Health Partners, Medica, and Preferred One. And Preferred One does not sell in our area, okay, due to the influence of the mail. We already have Health Partners, all right? So that leaves us with two other options to consider. And so I take a look at those and see what we can do. When we look at competitive plans, the first thing we do is we take a look at what plan is going to give us the best plan-for-plan option. None of the carriers exactly line up with each other. They all shift costs a little bit here and there to make the plan work, I guess, the way they want it to work. Year 2018 for small groups was an anomaly year, I would call it. In the prior three years since the Affordable Care Act, we've had, well, I still think they're all raises are too high, but nonetheless, we've been two years in the single digits and one year in double digits, hovering plus or minus 10% either way. This last year across the state, seeing 20% was not out of the question. However, when all the carriers see the same thing, then you know it's not the health insurance company's issue, it's the costs coming from the providers that are driving it because everybody had the same type of experience. So with that said, I have a brief summary of our findings and when... Actually, now, talk about here, kind of where we're leaning. Can I have a seat? So, okay. You want it on? Where? How do we do that? Here? Up? There we go. So our current rates are December 2017 renewal rates and that's why you see up on the upper left here where it says 2017. Our 2018 rates are all because we renewed 2018 in December, so that's why it says 2018. It's not actually 2019, even though most of the year will be in 2019. So the far, two columns on the left, the far left is our current Health Partners Plan and the premium. And one column over is our proposed Health Partners renewal. And then, the third column is the Medica Plan and the fourth column is the Blue Cross Plan. All these plans are considered small group plans and in small group, one of the advantages of small group is that the rates are not based on our own utilization, okay? So we are in a very large pool with either Health Partners or Medica or wherever we go. And that pool puts out what they call community rates, which means that the rates are the same for the city or if another city wants the same plan, they get the same rates. If the machining company buys this plan, they get the same rates. Everybody in our region, Area 1, gets the same rates for the same plan because it's called community rates. So it's not based on utilization. That is different than if you have a large group plan. For example, the school district has a large group plan. The county, a larger plan. Their health insurance rates are going to be more based on their own usage, more of the self-insure effect. You use a lot, your rates go up a lot, okay? And this is not like that. But, so what we have here is, you can see with the Health Partners Plan, the rates went up about 16 and 1/2% or so. And then, in the age-banded rates that we have, since everybody got a year older, that adds another 2.7% to the rates. So that brings us to a total increase between age increases and rate increases of 19.29%. That was a little bit, even as an insurance agent, that's a little bit much for me to stomach without actually going out and taking a look at what else is out there. So we looked at the Medica Plan and the Blue Cross Plan and set those two plans side by side with the Health Partners Plan. Our suggestion, based on the committee that looked at it, would be to go with the Medica Plan because the Medica Plan most closely matches our current plan and offers the employees a little better protection as far as catastrophic coverage. And so I can go through that very quickly. If you take a look at the Medica Plan, it's a $500 deductible for a singles and a $1,500 deductible for families. After the deductible, the plan pays 70%. That is 5% less than our current plan, but it's still within a similar plan. Worst-case out-of-pocket for a single person is $4,500 and worst-case out-of-pocket for a family is $9,000. That's the main reason we picked this plan over the Blue Cross Plan. If you can see, the Blue Cross Plan has a worst-case scenario of $6,500 for a single and for families, it's all the way up to $13,000. So that's quite a chunk of change, so that's the main reason that the Medica Plan basically becomes the preferred plan. Otherwise, the office visits, the specialist visits, and the prescriptions are all fairly similar. Moving to the Medica Plan basically brings our increase to 8.6%, which is about 6% of it is rate increase and again, 2.7% is roughly the increase that you get because everybody got older one year. So, all right, so I could talk on this until I put everybody to sleep, but I'm going to stop just in case you have questions because that always comes up.
What did we have in the initial, in the preliminary budget as a proposed increase?
The budget includes a 10% increase for health insurance.
Yes.
As far as family and that, have you ever looked at just a couple, you know, two people versus the family?
Okay, so you're talking about deductibles here. You're talking about premiums.
I'm talking about the insurance, like, okay, you've got the single.
Right.
Then a lot of times, insurance companies will have the two, you know, if it's just husband or wife.
Yep.
Two people. And then the family plan.
Okay. So that affects the premium structure. So in this case, if you have, a single would be charged a certain rate.
Right.
A single plus one would be charged a certain rate. A single plus a family will be charged a different rate under this plan. But the deductibles are only single and family. So the rate structure is multi-tiered. It's actually more tiers than that few, but yes. So in a sense, this plan does do that. It charges based on your family size and your age, which is how all small group plans work in the state of Minnesota.
Have we ever looked at, say, a cooperative?
We have. This year particularly, there's a couple reasons not to do that, okay? One reason is, our group, cooperative has the element of self-insure involved in it.
Sure.
Our group is really too small for that. And historically, when we had a model more similar to that, it wasn't good for us. And the service co-op also, they lost 34% of their business last year. The increases that I'm seeing coming out of the service co-op are between 30 and 40% or 20 and 30% for groups our size. They're shrinking. They have high increases. They have a model as far as the way it works that doesn't, isn't, hasn't been good for us. And the pool that we are in right now is much larger than the service co-op. So with all those things said, actually, they also won't even look at us unless we can provide, we tried this last year as well. If we can provide health utilization, usage, if we can provide statistics on our claims versus our premiums, they'll look at us. But we can't do that because we, because carriers don't supply claims information since the Affordable Care Act. So with that said, even if we could get that, it doesn't really work very well.
Kind of locked out.
We're not, right, we're locked out and even when we aren't locked out, it's not a good idea. I mean, I have three groups right now trying to beg me to get out of the service co-op. They got family rates of $2,800, you know? And that's not even in Region 1. That's in other regions. So, so it's out there. It's possible. Wouldn't be a good idea for us, in my opinion, but it is there, so.
Okay.
You know, hopefully that's a straight answer.
Do we have a consensus that we should probably go with Medica from the council?
Looks like that's probably the best option we got.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's the best overall. I mean, all you have to do is have one thing wrong. It'd be better to have 4,500 versus 6,500 out-of-pocket cost.
That's exactly, that's exactly the reasoning is that a $13,000 or a 6,500 can be a, that's a, that's a heck of a...
It doesn't even take a major thing to get to that level.
Right. That's a lot of cash out-of-pocket, so.
Is the local clinic in these networks?
Yeah.
I'm assuming? Okay.
And it's the, the local clinic, I think, is the mail clinic.
Mail, yeah.
Yeah, and so, yeah.
Okay.
So yes, they're in the network and yes, they drive the costs, so, in this region, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, well, appreciate you coming down and talking with us, Bill, and for the work you do for the city, so thanks.
All right, sounds good. And we'll talk soon.
Moves us on to item 7B, which is signs.
Hi. I think most of you know I own the property out back here. I've owned it. I've owned it for quite some time, several years before City Hall was here. Aaron Reeves came to me maybe in 2011 or '12. We discussed changing the roadway and we did. Like last Wednesday or Thursday, the chief of police pulled a campaign sign off my property. And thankfully, five days have lapsed, so I'm a bit calmer because I wasn't very happy. I had a nice chat with Dave Maroney yesterday morning and that was quite calming. And then I had a nice chat with Officer Joe Berg today. So I'm learning a little more on why the chief thought he had a right to pull my sign, which I still totally disagree with, but somewhere along the line, the city has been mowing the boulevard in front of my property. I don't know why. I didn't ask them. They're mowing more than what they own. After the chief, well, before the chief pulled the sign, I believe he came to Lanell and discussed it and city engineer got involved, but I never got a courtesy call and I probably should have. We gave him some information that's inaccurate, which doesn't surprise me. If you look around town, it's not only your campaign signs that are in violation, you have signs all over town in violation. I've known this for years. This year's an exceptional case in which campaign signs are getting out further and further and some are even right next to the curb. Now, there's some dispute on whether it's legal or it's not. It's inappropriate and I think it's illegal and doesn't bother me a whole bunch, but you should be in charge of your right-ofways. My sign was far, far and away from the curb compared to some of them that you have. Mine was on the other side of the city sidewalk. When I put it in, it was on my property. There is a photo somewhere around here that shows that it's close to the sidewalk, but I didn't put it there. As you can see, I've erected a new sign. That's when I was a little more angry. So at any rate, my suggestion is, is that we get our city ordinance shaped up so that we know what is legal and that we either police it or we leave them all go. Doesn't bother me that the signs are the way they are. You'd really care less till you pull mine. Then I've got a real problem.
You get your sign back?
Oh, yeah. And that didn't take me long, no. No, I've got it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right, that moves us on to reports this evening.
This report briefly on the ongoing discussion with the Bland and Broadband Communities Program. We're making some wonderful progress. I know John was out at the October 4 session out at Artisan Plaza. We had more than 35 local citizens come out and provide input to the group in terms of how they felt their organization, their business, their interests could use or could benefit from expanded broadband for their particular interests and how we might use Bland and grant dollars to assist us with that. After that meeting last Thursday, we've had another steering committee meeting and there's about 11 of us who are really assigned responsibility by Bland and to kind of see the overall management and administration of the, of the, of the projects themselves. So we had a great conversation yesterday with the steering committee and took a look at probably 15, 16, 17 proposed projects that would potentially use the Bland and grants to facilitate an implementation and solution for. We looked through those and we identified four of them as a quick start, relatively simple projects to get our arms around and move forward with the proponents of those projects and coordinate then the grant application, the grant process with Bland. And so, I think we're making some, some really good progress. Blanden's been a great partner, pushing real hard to keep us on track and get us moving forward, but I think we're making some good progress and I'm pretty confident that there's going to be some real positive outcomes, you know, from the Blanden program and the use of their resources and their technical assistance to help us move a variety of projects forward. So, going well so far, trying to keep up, but we're making progress.
Next, Dave. Mike?
I just want to talk about the street project a little bit tonight. We're looking to be probably substantially done in the next two weeks is what they're looking at. I'm going to see some curb getting finished up, sod getting laid down. And then after that, we'll be doing the milling overlay, part of the project that goes up Grove Street and that cul-de-sac on Mill Street and the first layer asphalt going in on the Mill Street going up the hill, which would be really nice to finally cap that hill off and get some asphalt down there. And then the last week of October, they'll be raising iron, raising the manholes and everything and doing the final grade of asphalt. So right now, I think October 30th, they've got to be, as long as the weather holds out, it's been kind of a rough fall for them, but they're not, they're not too bad. I don't, I don't remember the exact date they're supposed to be done by, but we're within probably a week of that right now. So they're, they're still doing really good with the weather we've had this fall to try to be done within probably two weeks of the initial date, so, or even sooner, so.
On Oak Street there, between Minnesota down to Water Street? Is that going to be milled?
Yep. That'll be part of the, that'll be part of the milling overlay part of that.
Or the width, we were just going to?
Correct.
Okay. Make sure they were going to do that one too still.
Yep. So there'll be a lot going on the next two weeks in that whole area, so, but then we should be looking pretty good. If anybody's got, I've been going out answering a few questions on trees, kind of where they can put them back and sizes and things like that, so if anybody's got questions on those, I just encourage them to call me and come out, take a look at it with them and any great issues or anything like that, now would be the time before we start throwing the sod down, so.
There are a lot of, a lot of trees lost on that street during the storm.
Yeah, the storm. We, we did a good job at saving most and the storm did its part, so it's kind of a bare street right now.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, like Kyle said, we got the trick-or-trot coming up on the 31st. I will probably be going as a police officer this year, so it might not be a surprise to many, but hopefully the weather will hold off because the day after Halloween starts winter parking. We know Mike's guys don't like to come out twice and plow, so we want to make sure to remind people to get cars off the streets, especially if we get that Halloween storm again. Winter parking is midnight to 6:00 a.m. for the residential, 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. for the downtown district. We do have parking permits for people if they need parking areas, that's in the city parking lot and up Mill Street by the library, but you do need to have a permit to park in those areas because we don't have that many, so. Also, on November 1st, we have Coffee Cops and Conversation. It's 10:30 a.m. I was at the bakery. Not too many people this last month, so we're going to try to promote it a little bit more and feel free to come and chat and have, we can address any issues anybody has. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
And just a reminder that Halloween night, kids will be out trick-or-treating too and it'll be dark, so. Lanell?
Thank you. Thank you. Nicole could not be here tonight, so she sent me an email that she put together a list of some upcoming events, so I said I would share that with you. The wiring class this Thursday is full. She may teach a reprise of the class another month due to its popularity. The forecast is supposed to be beautiful this week, so she expects to see people eager and willing to walk on the roaming readers on Friday. The Dakota County Paranormal Society will be at the library on Friday from 3:00 to 5:00. They're showing the movie Hocus Pocus on Saturday at 12:30. The music and movement storytime is going great on Thursday mornings. They are starting a read dog program at the library. On Wednesday, the 24th, at 6:00 p.m., there will be a meet and greet with Brass, the therapy dog. Registration for times to read with him will be after the meet and greet. They are hosting a history mystery modeled off of the game of Clue on Friday, October 26th at 7:00 p.m. This is a collaborative effort between the Cannon Falls Museum, Goodhue County Historical Society, and the library. Possible murder weapons will be artifacts from museum, and suspects will be historic figures from Goodhue County. We are still, or they are still taking registrations. You can call any of the three organizations to register for that event. She said to stop by the library during the trick-or-treat trot. She will not be a pumpkin, and you'll have to wait to see what she is this year. On Saturday, November 3rd, at 10:30, Arne Kind will be there again to talk about Minnesota in World War I. This program is brought to us by Selco and the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. So that's from Nicole. And then I just wanted to remind the City Council and the public that the general election is November 6th. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and due to that conflict, then, there will not be a council meeting on the 6th. That's been changed to November 13th, so we will conduct a regular City Council meeting on November 13th.
Thanks. Bill?
I was just going to talk about that myself. Three weeks to the election, encourage everybody to get out and vote, and the good news is, in three weeks, all those political commercials come off the TV. Thank God for that. That's it.
And the fines come out.
I just want to expand a little bit about that meeting out at Artisan Plaza about the broadband. That was an enthusiastic crowd. I learned a lot that night, and it's all about bringing broadband to everybody in town, make it available to everybody, but there's a lot of offshoots from that we can work on. It was, it was a good meeting.
I'm sure we've all seen the St. Ansgar Cemetery got hit pretty hard during the storm on the south end of town. They are trying to raise money through a GoFundMe to, I think it's over $30,000 they're trying to get for tree removal and to fix some of the graves and things like that. So if anyone's able to chip in a little bit, there's a link on their Facebook, or I'm sure you can call them as well.
Good.
All I've got is, we got a part board meeting this Thursday, and so if you want to come, glad to have you.
What time and where?
6:30 in the conference room.
Don't have anything tonight either? At this time, we will take a motion to adjourn.
All moved. Second.